If you wish to speak, there are registration cards. They're on the table in the back. And you can fill those out and provide them to city staff. Lauren just waved to you. She's on your left side of the chambers here. And she will collect those cards. And then we'll call you up probably with the order in which they're received. And it's your time to speak. We're going to go with approximately three minutes, give or take. If you're on a roll, we'll probably let you finish your roll. If you start to get a little redundant, we may give you the hook. But we also have a cute little timer over there that our friends at Amazon were able to ship to us. And so it will tell you, red means that your time is up. So we just ask you to be conscientious in terms of how long the red is up before you stop speaking.
Now, has the mayor always had access to this device?
He has not. No, this is going to be something new. This is going to be exciting. Yeah. So when you get to the podium, it's real important that you state your name, provide your address, and then you can go ahead and share your comments with us. And the comments need to be limited to the city charter amendments or any city charter provision that you would like to see amended. So please keep your comments to those things. One of the things that I'd like to do before we get started is I'm going to start down on my right, and I'm going to ask all the committee members to introduce themselves. And just a little bit of housekeeping for the committee members, when you want to speak, you actually have to press the button that says "Push," and then you'll know your microphone's on when the green light is on. So Gary, we'll start with you. If you can introduce yourself, that'd be great.
Hi, Gary Ward. I live at 4225 Walnut Drive here in Mesquite. Been here since 1972. So very interested in what goes on in the city. It's a great place to live, and I've been very proud to live in Mesquite.
I'm Elizabeth Wally. At 1112 Seabold Court in Mesquite. Been here just a few years less than Gary. But my husband and I are proud to live in Mesquite and proud to call it home.
Hi, I'm Ron Ward. 430 Running Brook Lane in District 4. I've been in Mesquite since January 2001. And this really is my first hometown after leaving the military. And I like it here.
Hey, Jeff Casper. I have lived in Mesquite my whole life. I'm not going to say the year. I'm one of the younger members on the committee. I don't want to put anyone off there. I represent the place, too, on the city council. More importantly, I'm a Mesquite ISD public school teacher. And I'm just looking forward to hearing all my committee members' thoughts on these important issues and the public's.
I'm Greg Noche, and I've been here since '96. Raised three beautiful girls here. And I'm very excited to kind of hear the input and hear what folks have to say about what we need to change, if anything. David?
My name's David Burus. I live at 4229 Correa Way. All I'm going to say is I moved here when I was four. Y'all can figure out how long that was been. Very glad to get up here and listen to what the input and what y'all have to say.
I'm Janice Bell. I've been living in Mesquite for about 20 years and really enjoy it here.
My name is Ricky McGilvery. I'm a pastor here in Mesquite. We moved our church from Pleasant Grove to Mesquite. We've been here since 2001. Live at 1014 Majors. And I like Mesquite.
Hi, my name is Alonda Shepherd. I've been in Mesquite since 1994. I live, work, play, and learn in Mesquite and have for 20-some years.
Very good. So without any further ado, we will go ahead and begin to receive citizen input regarding the Charter Review Committee.
I like sitting on that side better for planning and zoning. I'm Sherri Lyons. I live at 1448 East Park Drive. Is that all I needed to say to introduce myself?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm here to talk about two things briefly. Term limits is the first one. I know now that the council members that serve, serve for two years, and then they go up for reelection. And I want to say that if we put a limit on how long they serve, I would like to suggest three or four term limits, which is a total of six to eight years. And I would suggest to have at least two years, one term, before the individual could run again for council. If it is a new council member, this is my reasoning, the three to four term limit would give them time to learn the ropes, as per se, to connect with their constituents, and to follow through with various city business projects, ideas, et cetera, before being required to leave that position. My concerns on term limits are, when a term limit is up, can we be assured that someone else will run for the vacated place/position? It would be interesting to me to know how many different individuals have run on the election ballot for council or mayor for the last 15 to 20 years or so. If no steps are taken, or I'm sorry, if no one steps up to run for that place/position on the ballot, then what do we do? Okay? Because some -- oh, is that's three minutes?
No, that's a warning.
I was like, what? Okay. Then I'll hurry through.
You know, I think given the volume of folks that we have here, I think we'll dispense with the timing for now, so.
I know in the past, I was going to say that there's only been one person to vote for on the election ballot. So that's something I think you should consider when you start considering the terms and how many terms someone should serve. And then also, what happens if no one runs after those terms are over? Okay? And then changing the voting until November instead of in May. My understanding is that the voting number turnout is very low for city elections, like 1% to 2% of the citizens vote in the city of Mesquite. And if I'm not mistaken, and I'm not totally right on this, it's like 147,000 people, 1% to 2% vote. That's really, I'm really saddened by that. My question to you and for you to think about is the thought process about moving the city election from May to November, that that would result in more people voting because they vote for other things in November? If that's the case, and it would result in more people voting, I'm definitely in favor in moving it to November. Thank you very much.
Sherri, before you go, that's me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff.
They said we could interact a little bit.
Okay.
And so I just kind of want to pick your brain a little bit. We have seen this past election where we had an open seat. We had Dennis Tarpley retire, announced it a year ahead of time. And what we saw was one person file. And we've been serving with him, and he's great. But it wasn't necessarily, you know, and no one filed against me. I don't think our mayor had an opponent. So we really didn't have a competitive process. And from someone who, you know, at least teaches politics and government, it doesn't get much easier than an open seat. And not to say that Tandy didn't earn it. He did a heck of a job, talked to a lot of folks.
No, I agree with you, and I know, I'm very appreciative of Mr. Tandy.
Right. And so as someone who is supportive of term limits, how do you see us getting, recruiting, finding more candidates? Do you have any input on where you think these candidates would come from if we're going to start terming off council members?
Well, I think, that's a good question. For me, I looked on some other larger cities and how they, like what are their term limits? Because a lot of cities have term limits. Now, one of them had one that was four years, a term limit of four years instead of two. So if they served two terms, that would be eight years, okay? And our president serves for eight years, okay? So I thought, hmm, that sounds pretty good. But they also, on several of those sites, they publicize how to run for an office. I don't see that on the Mesquite site. Now, I could be missing it, but I'm not kidding. They told every little thing and what would be expected of you and that. Because I think there's a certain fear of running for public office. And that fear is accompanied by the fact that you're going to get beat up some, especially on social media. I've seen a lot of social media beat up.
What?
And so...
I think that's an important point. You know, the school district has a program called, I see our school board present in the back, "MISD Alive." Do I have that name right? And so they've had a program that does some training. I know we've had Mesquite Leadership, right?
Sure.
That's done some institutional kind of training. But I would say, and I don't know if this is a fair characterization, but I'd say both of those programs have, I don't know their original intent, but they've at least transitioned into being an institutional training. More of our staff are probably going through them than necessarily citizens who would think about running themselves one day. And there is a cost to at least the Mesquite Leadership Program. And I don't know if this is a charter, you know, recommendation or not. But I think one of the charges we have as citizens is to come up with a program, and I've mentioned trying to do some sort of local leadership academy, where we could recruit, train, equip people with the knowledge of, like you said, governance, and also what to know you're getting in for on the politics side.
That's right. And what kind of support you have, too, because I think you feel kind of like a loner out there sometimes. And that, I would like to personally see more, you know, like I would like to see women run. I would like to see all races run, because I think that's what represents our city. We've got to have representation of not only someone who's willing to run, but representing the citizens who live here. Thank you.
Sherri, I have a question for you, too.
Okay.
And it's something that's been intriguing to me. Because to me, when you talk about term limits, I guess the concern is that you're going to have somebody that's going to continue to serve in office, right?
Mm-hmm.
For a prolonged period of time. And I get that. What's your personal thoughts on why you have, you can go off for two years? Why isn't it just a blanket, you've served your eight years, you're done?
Because I don't, I think there should be opportunity for that person to come back on. I haven't really had a problem with people who have been serving. But the representation is part of why I think a term limit is good, to get fresh, new thinking, new blood. It's like any committee, when you roll off. I serve on planning and zoning. I will roll off of that committee, and then I'll go serve somewhere else in the city. But I just think the new blood is important, because just like with our representatives, state as well as Washington, I think that when they serve for long, long periods of time, they actually lose contact and connection with the citizens. And I think that's the important part, is the representation of really representing your citizens.
Do you think some of that has to do with gerrymandering the district?
I...
On the national level and state level?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I don't know, sir. I'm sorry, I can't answer that. But I do like the fact also of being able to vote for, when we have the elections, to be able to vote for the whole council and the mayor instead of only my district. Because people represent us everywhere. You know, I've got, I've called all kinds of council members. Jeff, Greg, Bruce, Dan, but they're not all, Dan's my council member from my district. But I think that's an important piece, too.
I think that's an interesting point, and I don't disagree. But let's say we do have a first-time candidate, right? A female candidate of color, and she's an all-star candidate, maybe is a little green about how to campaign. Do you think there would be an easier opportunity for someone of newness to campaigning to get elected by having a smaller district in which they could talk to their neighbors versus a city of 149,000?
Yes, I do. I would agree with that.
Any other questions for Sherri?
I do.
I have.
I have a question.
Okay. Let's go with, let's try and figure out a timeframe here. So you've got one, you've got one. Anyone else have a question for Sherri? All right. So we'll start with Elizabeth and then to come to you. Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right.
Sherri, would you, if we had term limits, if somebody were on the city council, would you count, and then ran for mayor and became mayor, would you count those as the same sort of terms or with the clock reset when somebody became mayor? Would they be able to term out from their council seat and then run for mayor? How do you see those interacting?
I think that's almost the way it is now. They can't serve as a council member and the mayor. Does that make sense?
Let's say we had a limit of three terms.
Okay.
For city council. And somebody served three terms as city council and then ran for mayor. Would that be, do you think that's okay? Or would they need to wait out a term, wait out a two-year period before they ran for mayor? Do you see them all?
Yes, I understand now.
Yeah.
That is a hard question to answer. And I hate to say it, but it would depend on who it is. You know what I'm saying? Because they would already have a track record, you know, with serving on the council. And I think the experience going into the mayor is important. So I don't know. I can't answer that, I'm sorry.
We're going to have another... We're going to have a couple more meetings, and you're always welcome back after you've thought about it for a while and give us your input.
Yes, I will be at my district meeting for sure over in, off for four.
How long do you think that there should be a limit between them? If they're a councilman now and they want to run for mayor, what do you think that term should be? Two, four years between before they can run for mayor?
I think that's almost the same thing I said.
Right.
Janice, is that I, it would just depend. I don't know how I'd feel about that. But I think if the person had done a great job at the council, I wouldn't want that person not to be able to run for mayor.
And as far as more people going to the polls to vote, also running for city council, do you think putting more things out on social media about the breakdown of the city councils, what their duties are, that maybe that would make people feel a little bit more at ease to where they want to run for it? Or do you think that would still fear them thinking that they're going to be terrorized on social media?
Well, I'm not sure social media is the place I see it being. I see it being presented by the city, maybe on the city website. Because that's where I saw the other information. I saw from larger cities, it was actually on the city website.
Good.
And it said you can contact for questions. I mean, it just gave a good overview of what it was to be part of the city council and to run for it.
And did you feel comfortable with that as far as if you decided you wanted to run for council? Did that make you feel like you wanted to?
Yes, because I would want to get some kind of guidance, you know? My heart might be in the right place, but I need the other, I need the guidance of how to get there and what's going to be expected of me.
Right.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brian Odom? Brian Odom, 1330 Buena Vista. Been here for a long time, since 1969. I'm here to voice my strong support for term limits. I agree three years on, or four years, I'm sorry, three terms on or four terms on. I prefer three, but four years is a compromise. And I also strongly disagree with moving the municipal election to November. I think that would try and bring partisanship into a municipal election where that really has no bearing. Go ahead, fire away.
Brian, what about putting municipal elections in November of odd-numbered years? When we have the constitutional amendment elections in November as opposed to the partisan elections that we have in the even years? What do you think about that?
I still think municipal elections need to be separated in May. I know I've heard a lot of, we need more voters, we need more voters, we need more informed voters, not just, we don't just need people, you know, pressing buttons. We need informed voters. We need voters who get involved and understand, you know, what they're voting for. Not just, well, I'm here voting for this great president, and I guess while I'm here, let me press this button for this guy. You know, I don't know who he is or anything, but since I'm here, I want people voting for my city. I mean, I know lots of people turn out for general elections, and that has very little to do with my day-to-day life in my city. You know, the municipal election, the city council, and the mayor have a lot more to do with my day-to-day life in my city. And I want people voting for that intelligently, not just, well, I'm here at the polls, voting for this president, so I'm going to press this button for this council member while I'm here.
Brian, go ahead.
Brian, how you doing, buddy?
I'm great.
How long would the terms be? You said three or four, but how long?
Two-year terms.
Two-year terms?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Three two-year terms, four two-year terms. I prefer three. I know, I would compromise and say you could get off for two years and then run again. Me personally, I would say no, no break. Once you've served, you served. You know, I do believe the clock should start over. If you are a two-term councilman and then you want to run for mayor, your clock starts over. But then once you've termed out either council or mayor, you're done.
Brian, I wanted to follow up to your answer from committee member Wally's question. What makes you say that a voter in November is less informed than a May voter?
Less informed about municipal election, not...
Right.
General.
But if we moved it to November, and then we have those May-informed voters, would they not follow and vote in November?
Sure.
What makes you say...
You have the same number of informed municipal voters just voting in November.
What makes you say, though, that a person voting in November would not become self-educated?
Because there's a whole lot of those voting in November who don't decide to get out in May. So, you know, there's really no reason just to have another voter to come out in November. I'm not, I don't think he would educate himself, well, since I'm going to go vote for this, another having the municipal election here. I better get my, you know, stuff together for the councilmen also. They're just...
Do you think it'd be on the responsibility of a candidate to educate the voter pool and get them engaged enough to turn out and vote?
Sure.
I shared this anecdote in our pre-meeting. I know when I was campaigning and we had a school bond, it was great. We had a lot of new voters, who a lot of, who were educators or cared about education, but had never voted for a school board member or a city council member in their life. They didn't know what May election was ever, but they knew that there was a school bond. And as they were walking through the parking lot, they said, oh, there's a city council election? Are you the incumbent? No? Okay, you got my vote. Right? And there's those kind of voters in May election. I'm just curious on how would we parse out who is educated and who's not, and who's qualified to vote and who's not?
Be careful with the word "education." I mean, when I say an educated voter, I don't mean someone who hasn't been to high school or what. I'm talking about educated to the, what the candidates are campaigning for, what they're about.
Don't like that.
Yeah, I'm just, for people out there. I want them to understand, I'm not saying they're not educated. So I thank you. Of course, you're always going to have your, you know, your curve, your bell curve of people who, oh, what's all these people going over here for? Let me go over here and look. You know, I guess I'm better vote since I'm here. That's what it is. I just, I don't think you're going to have a more substantial number of voters to get out and vote for a municipal election, just because it's in November. And that's when we, that's when we vote, is in November.
Do you, do you think that when someone sees municipal candidates on the ballot during a general election, now the first time they go and see that, first time that occurs, then they're probably not going to know who to vote for, some of them?
Correct.
But don't you think that they might make a little bit of effort the next time a general comes up? Hey, you know, he's voting for city council. I mean, some of that is to encourage educating them to how important it is that they become involved in local elections.
That could be a fact. I mean, someone goes, oh, man, I gotta vote for, you know, city council, too? Well, I don't know who I'm voting for this year, but next year, I'm definitely going to get more involved. I think the city's full of a whole bunch of people who, ah, I'm going to get involved next week.
Any other questions for Brian?
I have one. Hi, Brian.
Hello, Alonda.
Do you think the November, moving the voting to November would get us a greater representation of city members voting? For example, let's say the municipal election, we have, what, 3,000, 4,000 people? And if we're voting in November, we could double that amount of people and really get the voice of the community?
You're definitely going to have more voters. That's a fact. You're definitely going to have more voters. But are they going to be informed voters for municipal candidates? That would be my only fear, is just having people who are there to vote for their president. I'm voting for that president.
So how would they know? I mean, unless the candidate informs them? How would they know? I mean, how can we, what are your suggestions for informing the public of the people that are running for municipal elections? What can be done to make the public more informed?
Believe it or not, I believe term limits would get the public more informed. Because like y'all said earlier, what about an open seat? Well, we all know how hard it is to unseat an incumbent.
Yes.
Correct? I said earlier, I was born here in 1969. Mr. Tarpley recently stepped down last year. Since I was born in 1969, he was the fourth, fourth councilman to hold seat six. Four councilmen in 48 years. People look at that and go, I'm not running against that guy. There's no chance. So with term limits and a higher overturn of councilmen, well, then you're going to have, you know, I don't know what else to do with that for. It's on silent, I swear. But you would have more of the average citizen, and with more of the average citizen candidate, you're going to have more of the average citizen's friends, more of the average citizen coworkers to involve into a municipal election.
Any other questions for Brian at this point? We'll have one more question for Brian.
Okay. Brian, think for a minute about the voters that go in November of the odd-numbered years like this year where we have constitutional amendment on the ballot... years, like this year, where we have constitutional amendment on the ballot and very little else? Do you consider that those are more informed voters? And would you be comfortable with having municipal elections on that ballot? And do you think there would be any benefit to the voters to only have to make one trip to the polls and only have to study up on the issues one time instead of two times in that year?
That's two questions.
I'm sorry.
I'm kidding.
You're right. It was two questions.
I would, if you're asking for a comfort level, I would feel more comfortable having a municipal election in November on the odd-numbered years, if that's a compromise that we need to make. You know, we all have to compromise, you know? So, I would feel more comfortable if someone said, "Look, we're definitely gonna move this to November." Do you want odd or even? Well, I definitely would feel more comfortable in an odd year. Thank you.
Thank you. Sonia, we probably oughta go ahead and start using the timer. So, let's go with five minutes. You wanna go with last?
I know.
How much time, how much time would you like?
I know I was gonna be asked questions.
How much time would you like?
I'm just a lowly resident, okay?
You're, actually, it's much more important than that. You're the most powerful person in this room right now.
Yeah. I am Audrey Carter. I live at 205 Woodbridge Way, and I've lived here over 30 years.
Ms. Carter, how much time would you like to have?
Not long.
Okay. And you don't want any questions?
Well, you know, if I can answer them, that would be great, but I've never served in a seat like y'all. I mean, I've been a reserve police officer, I've done things, I run crime watch, send kids through school, but there's a lot I do not know. Okay, concerning term limits, I think two to three years on, two years off, with the possibility of coming back. I mean, let's be honest, we have some good people in seats that we would want to see back. I believe they should be given that opportunity. I think the time that they would have off would give them the chance to have time spent from government seats where they could be out among citizens and really see more of what the citizens need and experience more of the policies and laws that they have put in place. I have seen many good people come through here and have governed Mesquite, but I'm sorry to say, and all honestly, I have seen people that have come in and nested in seats, and things became complacent, they became stagnant, and it really didn't move forward. Now, as a resident, what I see is, we've changed a lot of seats, and with that has become change. Wonderful change for our city. And where I speak, I see change. I see change in the more of prevention of crime. We're having more police officers put on. We are seeing a lot of involvement from city council members in our schools. We're just seeing a lot more involvement of our council members all the way around in our city, and we did not have that before. I did not see it. That is my take on this. As a resident living in Mesquite, again, I'm not saying they serve two to three years and they're out. Maybe, you know, I think we would not even be here were it for a lack of voters. People getting involved. People do need educated to where they get involved with government. One thing they are scared of is they have their lives laid out there on the line. You know, I mean, social media and people, I mean, everything you've done is out there on display. Everybody has passed, but not everybody wants it out there. And we live in a world that people want to put it out there. I think that our city needs to educate people more on the city processes and encourage them to run for seats. I don't know enough that I would run for a seat, okay? And let's admit, you don't get rich on these seats either. You have to work, support your family, and do city council work. That's a, that's a big thing to ask of a person. It really is. So, maybe educating the public more, getting out involved. I'm not so scared that if, say, we had an election and we had an empty seat, okay? Am I gonna blow up? Or is that a, okay. So, I'm really not as concerned about that, because y'all are supposed to be city councilmen at large. It's not, you know, I know we have districts, but I don't know anybody on the city council or in my city that I couldn't go to, and they'd say, "Let me, I'll work with you. Let me get back to you. We'll figure that out." I'm not afraid of that. And term limits, I think it might even encourage more people to get out and vote. I really do.
Audrey, I wanna ask you a quick question.
Please keep it simple, Jeff.
I am, I am. But I'm going through your rationale. You said you like the council the way it's directed. You've seen positive changes. You wish we could educate, as an institution, voters or residents more so that they feel equipped to run. I agree with you on all those things, but are those arguments for term limits? It sounds like if you were to take away that statement, everything you've said-
Yeah, I wanna say-
The status quo.
I do support term limits. I mean, given what I've seen in Mesquite over the years past, I mean, but like I said, I'm not saying term limits without the opportunity to come back may be a break to give others a chance to come in that have new fresh minds, like we have. It's a big difference in our city and the things that are going on, what we see now. And there's people on our council that have been here a while, and they've done a good job. They're still here.
But you would agree that we've seen these changes without term limits?
We have, but again, I'm wondering if term limits wouldn't get people more involved. And without term limits, we have seen people take seats and stay there and become stagnant and ineffective. And I'm proud of the new people that have come in, and I'm proud of the ones that are here and that are working to make, you know, city effective and making it better for the residents, making it better for everyone as a whole. I'm very proud of that. But I'm just saying that we have seen changes take place, and change, you know, it might be a tough thing to go to term limits, but change is good. Change is good. It gets people like me involved. Before, you didn't really see me a lot involved, because it was so stagnant, and it was like, "I don't wanna hear you." Term limits get people involved. And like I said, one of the current concerns I did have was if somebody did not fill a I don't feel that concern. If people are that concerned, they need to get out and vote, and maybe it will encourage them to when they find their area seat empty. So, that's where I stand on it, and I do appreciate it very much. I didn't even look at my notes, so.
That's impressive.
Audrey, would I be permitted to ask a quick question? If you don't have an opinion on it, that's fine.
Is it gonna be two questions again?
Well, no. I can promise. But you mentioned that people don't get rich, you know, on the city council.
No, they don't.
I think it's $50 per council meeting for council members and $100 for the mayor.
Well, it's actually $50 a month.
A month? Okay, not a meeting, a month.
And wait, cellphone allowance, too.
Oh, okay. A big perk. Yes. But, I mean, do you have an opinion? Do you think it would be, it would help get more people to run if the compensation were higher?
It would. I believe it would.
You think that would be a good thing?
Well, I do. I really do. But then, I don't want just people running for money either.
Ma'am, if I may, how do you feel about moving the elections to, from May to November?
Well, if it's in November, what I would be concerned about is, like was mentioned, just going down the line, ba-ba-ba-ba-ba. Let's get out of here. If we had a separate election, I think people might be more informed and likely to think about it. But then there again, we have a problem with lack of voters. That's a big problem. Like, I don't think we would even be here were that not the case. You know, it's lack of voters and participation that, to me, whether it's November or May, is not really that big a deal to me personally. But I just know many go in the polls to wanna get it done, get it over with and run out. I think it goes back to education. We need to get people out there and educate them on why they're voting, why the vote is being taken, what the issues are. And, you know, I think education, educating people, I think that's the key to it, whether it is November or it's May. I think people need educated, more would show up if they were, if they took more stock in our city. And like I said, if we didn't have, we had term limits where every seat wasn't filled all the time, it would get people out and say, "Oh, no, we're gonna, we gotta vote, we gotta make a difference."
Don't you think it's incumbent upon all of us to educate ourselves as to who's running for office and why?
It is, but sadly, people don't do that.
Can't really, I mean, you lead a horse to water, right?
That's right. That's right. But you gotta tell the horse where the water is. You gotta try to help take 'em there.
May I?
Go ahead.
Okay.
I noticed that when the city was talking about the alcohol coming to the city, how that they was at Crower and all these places for the alcohol to come into the city. Maybe if the candidate would go out and just get people excited about voting, maybe that would help. The term limits are getting folks out to vote, because I believe that one of the things that will happen if you, if you're campaigning, that's another way of educating also.
Yes, sir. I fully agree with that. I agree. I think that if you hold a city office, you should be out among the people, because if you are not, then you're disconnected. I believe a connection should be made. I believe everybody who serves the city in an official capacity should know their areas, and not only their areas, but have a stake in all, and know people, and be out around them. And I believe that if you are not, you're not connecting with the people that you are supposed to serve.
I've got one question. What do you think about single-member districts?
One more question.
Single-member districts?
Or the way it is right now, where everybody votes for everybody, and, but one person represents a particular district?
I would love to see more than one represent districts. Maybe I didn't quite answer that like you wanted it.
Yeah, what did you mean?
I would just like to see more engagement as a whole, because I am told that all our representatives are engaging in the city as a whole. I know you have areas, but at large, all our representatives should take more interest at large in other districts as well. Now, that may not have answered, but, yeah, I would like, again, I would like to see more out among the people, connected with the people. And I believe that they do need educated. I do believe that people are campaigning, should be out there, but not just when they're campaigning all the time. Because if I were to want to run for a seat, then I would know that I'm taking a seat to get out and involve myself with the people. What am I gonna do with $50 a month? It's not profiting me. It is for the people, and that is what the city officials are supposed to be about. So, although I can see the pros and cons on this issue, term limits or no, I don't know. I don't know that it might not engage more people. And I thank you all. I wanna tell you, you are all appreciated. And I went way over, but in the Mesquite, in the city of Mesquite, and I've lived here a long time, since we have made changes, and yet, change is scary, and it can be messy for a while, but change is not always bad. And the changes I have seen in this city have been phenomenal. And just to even stand here and be able to speak is phenomenal, 'cause I remember not long ago, before we changed some seats, these meetings and stuff were not really held. And there were times that the city council meetings were all set while everybody was at work. So, change has given me a voice. It's given me more of a voice. And sometimes, change tends to bring out voices in others. And so, I wanna say that every one of you are appreciated. Every time I've ever called, no one's ever said, "That's not my district, I can't do it." And if they were busy or had, they would refer me to who I could get ahold of. And so, term limits or no, I support everybody who's in a seat, because I believe in law and process, and I believe in what's good for our city.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joshua Kidd, and I live at 401 Adelaide Drive, and I'm here to support term limits, or speak in favor of term limits. I believe that it's vital for our city to have them, and I think that the danger in us not having term limits is, one, we allow city, this would allow city council members to become complacent and to become comfortable in their seats. And the best example of this is to look at past leadership. And with all that said, there are good people that have ran before and that have served our city, but after serving for a decade or more, they became complacent and they became out of touch with our citizens and uninformed. And it really didn't move our city forward. And with that, I think it would be good for us to have term limits. And I would like to see the term limits being voted on in May on the ballot, and I would like to see up to three terms that our council members could serve, and each term lasting two years, and not necessarily see a break in between terms. And as far as whether or not the clock would restart if a council member decided to run for mayor, I think it should. I think it should restart. Say, a council member serves two terms, and then they do wanna run for mayor, I would like to see it restart in that. But I do think it would be positive for our city to have term limits, so.
Sure. Okay.
One thing that we are talking about, that council person served in place one, would you have a problem with them running for place two?
As far as that goes, I would like to see it how it currently is. I would be fine with them just serving that same district.
And that's it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes. Sure thing.
Joshua.
Ms. Shepherd, or Dr. Shepherd?
Joshua, why are you opposed to, or are you opposed to holding elections in November?
I think it's important to have the elections in May, and the reason I wouldn't wanna see these elections in November is, people are being bombarded constantly during a general election. They're getting flyers in the mail, they're getting phone calls. I mean, I can tell you, I mean, we all experienced during general election with the presidency and with Congress being voted on. I think it's important to have our own time set aside, if you will, our own separate date for municipal elections, 'cause I think people are more able to focus on that. They're not like going down through the ballot like everyone else was saying, just checking off names and then don't even care about who's running on a local level. I think it would be best served with the city if we kept it how it is in May instead of moving it to November.
Do you have any thoughts on getting greater participation for May votes?
Would you repeat that? I couldn't hear the part of that.
Do you have any thoughts on getting greater participation from the citizens during the May elections?
The only thing I can think of is, if people, if people don't care they're not going to go out and vote, I mean, we could, we could put out there that we're having election this coming May or something, but unless people don't care they're not going to- or something, but unless people don't care, they're not going to get out and vote. And I don't know if you can really make people go out and do that, or make them want to unless they want it to, you know.
Ms. Wally, did you have some questions for Mr. Kidd?
I had a, I had a question regarding moving elections to November.
Sure.
Think about November of a year like this one, odd-numbered years, where we don't have the, the big partisan elections. What we have is the constitutional amendments in November.
Sure.
So, you know, a certain number of people are gonna go vote on those. Would you have the same feeling about moving local elections to the November of the odd-numbered years? Would that, do you see that as a plus or a minus or neg, or neutral? How do you feel about that?
I would say maybe neutral. I would like to see it how it currently is, keep it in May. Even if it's an odd year, I wouldn't want to see it moved to November, just keep it the way that it is currently.
Do you have any other comments or any other thoughts?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
My name is Lonnie Crane. Address is 1007 Rodeo Center Boulevard. I'm here in support of term limits. I would like to see a three-year term limit with a, at least a two-year off and then be able to come back and run. The, uh...
Can I clarify that for a minute? You said three-year term?
I'd like a three-year term limit with two years off before, you know, so you'd spend two years not be able to run and then maybe come back.
So you want three two-year term limits?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry about that. The, I would like to keep our municipal election on in, in May. The, the reason being, as someone who has run, I think it would be very difficult for me to run in a November election. It's already very difficult, especially if you, if we keep it as a citywide election. I don't know if you've tried, but there's a lot of schools, the voting, voting places, things like that to get your signs up, to let people know. I think if I'm, you know, across the street from, from my business, there's, there might be 20 signs out there during a November election. My little sign isn't gonna look very good next to their nice big signs. You know, it's, it's expensive and difficult to run sometimes, you know. I didn't have a big budget. I ran on a small budget. It was probably one of the best experiences of my life, but it was a very difficult one. You know, I learned a lot of lessons about city politics and things like that. So, you know, I would highly encourage anybody that's interested to go run. You know, Jeff and I have talked about the Citizens Academy to, to maybe train people that, hey, that book that she hands you isn't that daunting. You know, you know, I can remember the day she piled, she reaches under her desk, I'm thinking, I'll get a paper, I'm gonna fill it out, and she pulls out this pile of paperwork. I'm thinking, there is no way. You know, so it can be intimidating. You know, the whole process is intimidating. But I think as we get people informed and tell them, you know, it's doable. We've got some support groups, there's people that can help you, there's, if you want to run, there's people to get behind you and run. So I, I love the, the idea that we have our city elections and that, and that that's my time to run, or somebody else's time. It's a time that's set aside that, you know, I know about the elections and I'm involved, and it's still hard for me to find the forums and make sure I make the date. It's hard for me to find the information on the candidates. And, man, if I'm trying to work on a presidential election or make sure that I'm informed on the constitutional amendments for Texas, you know, boy, that's a, that's a daunting task to do all of those things and still make it, make my decision effective for the city. So I do like the ability that we have to keep that there and, and do that.
Lonnie, can I clarify? I think you raise an important concern about November elections and all of a sudden having access 70,000 voters. Would you support a November election in which you only had a campaign in one-sixth of the city? And you would be, your voter pool would be densely compacted so that you could actually go door-to-door, get to know your neighbors, and actually, you know, press the flesh and get to know them that way?
Well, that's another thing that I would be for, is shrinking that down to my area. Because again, running for the whole city is hard.
It is.
Whether you're a district guy or a at-large guy, it's the same campaign.
And in May, when we run, you have such loosely dense voter pools that you can't even knock doors. You have to, you have to drive from door to door to door if you actually want to meet people.
Yeah.
But if you, if you had November elections, you have more targets, and then you are more densely compacted as well, if you're doing, you know...
And I think those of us who are involved in neighborhood and are a community, you know, it's easier for me to run in my neighborhood, because those people know me. I'm available, I'm out there, I'm doing things for them, things like that. So, I guess my, my biggest point would be, I, I like the May elections, because it allows me to run. You put it in a November election, it makes it very hard for just a regular citizen to go out there and, and do that. Makes it expensive, too. I think, I think when I have to, in, in a single-member district, I love that, and I'm running in my area, man, give me that. You know, that's a lot easier than running in the city, because that was, that was a daunting task to think, man, here's election day and I've got to get signs out to seven schools, you know, where the voting polls are, or locations, and so makes it very difficult. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I've got a question for you.
Sure.
We both have ran for city council, so we understand. But from the citizens' perspective, what do you think of single-member districts? Not from our perspective, but for, from the single, from, from the citizens.
I, I like the idea that it might empower different people to run. You know, people that, that think, man, I can't win in the whole city, but I can certainly run in my neighborhood. You know, my neighborhood's predominantly Hispanic. Why can't one of the people from my neighborhood run and be out there? I mean, you've proved it can be done, right? You know? So I'm, I definitely think it adds to the diversity of our, of our, of our city.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sergio?
Good evening, committee people.
Good evening.
All right. I am in favor of term limits, let me get that off, out of the way. I am, uh...
Can you name and address, please?
Sergio Garcia, 1724 Longview, here in Mesquite, 75149. I'm in favor of the three-two idea of a term limit, which is three two-year terms and two years off, but I'm not opposed to the four-two idea. Then they would, the council person would be able to have a chance to come back. I would think that if a council member were to move from like one or two, as long, if they did not roll off for two years, then I would think that the limit of three, two-year terms would still apply. I would also think that the, the council should be voted, when the election time comes for council, it should only be half the council at a time, not everybody at once. Because you could run into a situation where you have a bunch of new people, or a bunch of new people, half new people and then the other half only one term. We need to be able to have some experience in the council at least.
Sergio, can I clarify?
Yes.
Well, right now, if you, if you play that hypothetical out, we have a, a pretty young council in terms of experience.
Yes.
Right? And so if you, if you were to institute a three, two-year, three-term, two-year terms, you would have a lot of them rolling off at, at the same point. It'd be staggered, but you would still have a extremely, maybe extremely is too harsh, you would have an inexperienced council.
I think that's...
How do you put those two ideas together?
No, I think that if you have four years, two ye, or six years, and you have council that are, members that are staggered, I believe there's still, at that amount of term, is enough experience to run an effective council. And it would even get better if you were up to four, two. I believe that one solution to the question that Mrs. Wally had said about if a council member were to go from council member to mayor, but how do we keep, if we're gonna say we're gonna have him roll off for two? We could look at the model of the city council. We could look at eliminating the position of the elected mayor, and instead make another city council person. And then every year or two years, the city council members amongst themselves pick someone to serve as mayor. That way, we could have the two- or four-year term, and then someone could roll off. And there wouldn't be a difficult situation where if somebody was wanting to run for mayor, but they were termed off because they'd already served six or eight years. I believe that, let's see, what else? No, that's about it for me right now.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Garcia, how do you feel about moving municipal elections to November? And does it make a difference, November of even-numbered years, where we have the big partisan elections, as opposed to November of odd years, where we have constitutional amendments in November?
For, for me, for many of you know, who know who I am, but my view on it is that whether it's held in November or May, even or odd, the situation that it poses, its advantages or disadvantages, to me personally, does not matter. It is a challenge, any election you're gonna be in. Whether or not, how good you are at a campaign, or how good you are at electioneering during that time, if you're gonna be a lazy candidate and let your opponent win, then that's on you. I see it if, you know, if, if it was me, it's gonna be a challenge either way. However which way that the city wants to hold their elections is, it will be fine with me.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Explain the four-two again?
Four-two, yes, that's four two-year terms and two years off.
Okay. Thank you.
Sergio, what do you think about single-member districts?
I think, uh, single-member districts would increase the, the probability of having a diverse council. Right now, I think that we need a council that is diversified, that looks like the city of Mesquite. A great example is the high school government day, when the councils from each of the high schools show up. That's what the city of Mesquite looks like. Another great example is this committee right here. It's great. I like how this one looks. But our current council and councils of the past have not looked like that. We need a council that is diversified, that looks like the city they represent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Deborah Morgan? Deborah Morgan, 223 East Kimbrough Street. First, I am for term limits, but I'm a little bit different. I've been thinking about this. I like the idea of having staggered terms, but I am thinking to four-year terms, rather than four-two-year terms. Therefore, you could have like half the council elected this two years, the other part elected this two years. And then you're not going to have a completely new council at any one time. You will have the experience. After those eight years, I would say you have a break of two years. You don't have to wait for more. As far as single-member districts, I think it would help in the city to make the council look more diversified. It may also bring out more people who want to run, as well as more people voting, because then they're not voting for the entire city. They're voting for their area. Moving elections from May to November, if your voters are informed, I don't think it's gonna make much difference. I think I do agree with the fact that if you do it during the same years as general elections, you may get a lot of people who are just punching numbers, punching buttons. But if the people who are running get out, make themselves known, you will have more informed voters. I think that's all I have.
Well, great. We'll see if any of these great folks have any questions.
Okay.
Any questions for Ms. Morgan?
You said four to four-year term?
Yes, sir.
Staggered?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And how would you start those, with the existing council? What would be your suggestion for a transition into...
Okay, say, the existing council, like, I know you were just re-elected, Robert McClos was just elected. Those, you would just add the two years, two years. Those who are coming up for election next would be going for four-year terms. Does that make sense?
It does, but you would have that count as a term?
That I'm gonna have to think on.
And, and the only reason I bring that up is, I'm curious to hear your thoughts if you think the, there's a current issue with the composition of the city council serving too long. We have one member who has served three two-year terms.
Right.
We have three who've served at least two terms, and we have three who are in their first term.
Right.
And so if you were to analyze it from that perspective, I would say we have a really young, inexperienced council. Do you think term limits is really the, the issue that we should be addressing to create a healthy civic democracy?
I'm not certain it's the biggest issue. I think the bigger issue is moving to the single-member districts and making it more diver, a more diversified council to look like the city does. And I'm a lifelong resident, so...
And do you think that can be done with the, the May electorate as it's currently composed? Or how do you think from an electorate who has never elected an African-American in our city's history, how do we get a more diverse council from the existing electorate? If we don't change anything structurally about the way we hold our elections?
Right. Well, with what you were talking about, you're going to have to have education from the people who are running, get out the message that if you want to run, these are places you can go to learn what you need to do to run an effective campaign, to be an effective council member.
Would you like six single-member districts?
I'm not certain yet. If you're going to leave the mayor as a separate member, six will be okay, but I would say the mayor only votes if it's a three-three tie. Does that make sense?
Yes.
But with as big as Mesquite has gotten, and the talk about adding the I-20 corridor, may have to look at more single-member districts to divide it up better. Because those, the districts that there are, the four, are kind of big. I was looking at the map the other day. And it's difficult for those council members, even though they represent the entire city. I can talk to any of them I need to. It might be better to go to smaller districts and have a couple, say, eight members, plus the mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me ask a real question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you see, given that, that voter turnout is very low in Mesquite, do you see that as a problem that the city needs to do something about?
I'm not sure the city can do something about the low voter turnout, other than make it a point that the citizens do know when the elections are, when early voting is, put out the word, but it's going to be up to the citizens to go vote. The city can't hold their hands to get them there. Did that answer your question? Okay.
Thank you.
I brought war and peace.
Did you?
I have brought war and peace.
Oh, have you?
My name is David Fitzgerald, live at 1837 Palo Alto Drive. I have several items that I'd like to discuss. One is term limits. I believe that we should have three two-year terms. I believe that there should be a four-year break or two two-year term breaks in between if you want to run for council again. And I believe if you want to run for mayor, those restrictions do not apply. In other words, you could run a full six years as a council member and then decide to run for mayor that next election. But I also believe that the mayor should be limited to three two-year terms. And then if chooses to run, they have to wait a full two-two-year term period, four years total. Residency requirements. Currently, the council members are required to reside in the district in which they are elected. They are not required to live in the district in which they serve. Kind of the way the wording, things are worded, but we've had situations in the past where council members have a home in Mesquite, but they also have a, another home and spend a lot more time there than they do here. And I would like to see it that their residency requirements be changed, that they have to... to live in the district if they serve in the district. Uh, I mean, conceivably, you could move out of the district and still serve your term out in that district, the way it's worded, if I've read it correctly.
David, real quick, I, I'm not sure I caught that. So, you're, you're suggesting that somebody owns a home, they just don't actually live there?
No. What I'm suggesting is, is they spend most of their time at maybe a second home.
Okay. And so I guess how would you check, how would you enforce it? What would be the mechanism?
Well, the city would need to determine that. Uh, I'm not sure what that mechanism would be at this point, but I do know that if you're not spending your time in the city of Mesquite, where are your interests? Where do your interests lie? And you should be spending your time and serving in the city that you live in, a majority. Now, that doesn't mean that somebody can't go, you know, during the summer and spend three days a week at their lake house. You know, everybody wants to go to the lake, especially if you have that kind of time available, you know, take advantage of it. But, uh, you definitely need to be living in the city and, and serving those. Because if you're not here, you can't serve those that you were elected to serve. You, you can't. Um, single-member districts. I believe that we should have single-member districts. I believe, right now, as most of us know, but some of us may not, uh, we have four single-member districts in which you're required to reside to be elected in that district, but you are elected by the city as a whole, which means that even though you may serve a particular district, you are beholden to the entire city, and other parts of the city can determine what, who is elected, especially if there's low turnout in a particular district, who is elected in that district even though that district is not theirs. Uh, I think it, it would be beneficial to not only the council member, uh, for election purposes, running and things such as that, not having to canvass through the whole city, but also to the, the council member in that, that council member can focus on the area of town that they, that they serve. Right now, we, even with our single-member council members, you still have to answer to the citizens of the entire city. And what I mean by that is if somebody from District Two calls a council member from District Four with an issue, that council member is most likely going to do what they can to help, or possibly even say, hey, I'm going to get your council member in your district involved. But they still have to be concerned and follow up, because that is a voter. If you just blow that person off, uh, and not, not pay attention to their concerns, and I'm not suggesting that that would happen if we were a single-member district, but that representation would be passed on to that council member who serves that district, and you would know who you can go to. We've had some people here tonight comment that they're not sure that if they went to their council member, if they would get any help or not. So I think this would go along with helping that out. Also, the question came up a while ago, about six districts, we, would, would we go to six single-member districts? Uh, that's a question we need to look at, because I don't, looking at the way the city's divided up and the population growth in certain cities, whereas the other areas have already saturated with residents, we probably have an imbalance of citizens in certain districts. So we definitely need to make sure we're looking at the number of citizens in the districts. You want to keep them relatively even, so that everybody has equal representation. Um, the mayor should be elected at large, no question. Um, but all the, the, the members of the district should be, uh, elected individually. I believe that we should combine the elections into one election. Currently, we hold two elections. Those elections are in May of every year, um, and three council members are elected one year, the next year, three council members and the mayor elected. We could save, as a city, up to 50% of the election cost for electing our council and our mayor, if we combine those elections to one year. I do favor leaving those elections in May and not moving those to November. Uh, you have other elections that are going on in the even years, the national campaigns, the state campaigns, so on and so forth. A lot of people focus on those issues and are working hard to get their representation at the national and state level. The elections on odd years in November where we have constitutional elections, the turnout in those elections is similar to the turnout that we have in municipal elections. It's very light. So, I think we need to have the elections in May, when most municipal elections are held, so that the city can focus on those elections. And it doesn't matter if it's a council member, or a candidate running for that seat, or the citizen who's going to vote. If you want to have an informed electorate, you don't need to spread them thin as to what they're trying to inform themselves on, whether it be a national election or a constitutional election. You need to have them focus on, on what we need to do, or what they need to do as far as voting on, uh, who's running for the, for the city elections and to inform themselves. That's going to be the first step, is make sure we keep it there, so they can inform themselves. And, let's see here. And, like I said, it would save up to 50% of the cost on those elections if we moved it all to one year. Questions?
Yes. What if, what if somebody told you that turnout for the constitutional amendment elections in November of the odd-numbered years was more than double what it is normally for a local election in this area? Would that make any difference?
Well, i- i- it might make a slight difference. Right now, I think our, our average turnout is somewhere between two and a half, three and a half, four percent for a municipal election, on a good year. Uh, on the year we had alcohol, we had at least, I believe, 5,000, approximately 5,000 voters, 500 voters turnout, and that was around seven and a half, eight percent, if, if I remember the, the total numbers. Problem is, is we have, I think the last numbers I looked at, around sixty, sixty-five, seventy thousand registered voters in the city of Mesquite. Um, and on a typical municipal election, you'll have anywhere, I can speak from experience, one election that I was in, as I ran twice, we had over 5,000 voters, and the next election that I ran, we had around twenty-two, twenty-three hundred voters. Okay? Uh, there are some constitutional amendments that will garner more attention, but if it's not a, a large issue that a lot of people are interested in, I would say that turnout's not going to be as great typically. I mean, I, I may be wrong. So you're talking?
Yeah, statistically.
As opposed to having, as opposed to having 2200 voters, now you have 4,400 voters, or on a, I'm sorry?
I can't.
Well, you said, you said double, so I'm using your numbers, if, if you're.
More than double, yeah.
Okay. So if you're talking 10,000 voters, you may have 10,000 voters. The problem with voter apathy is not the fact that, um, you get voters out that aren't informed, um, always, but, but you sometimes do. And I'll give you a perfect example. During the national elections, we had straight-ticket voting until, until September 1st of this year. During the national elections, you would have someone come and they would vote straight-ticket. But if you had an item on the ballot that was not a partisan issue, it would not get voted on. You also had some voters who refused to vote straight-ticket, but they would still vote straight-ticket, just each individually. Or they would ask, hey, who do I vote for? And I know this because I've run it a couple of elections. I've run, I was actually election judge on one and alternate judge on another. You have some voters that vote just the top two or three items, and then they leave the bottom of the ticket blank. And even in a city election, you will have the same thing. You will never have the same number of voters voting for one candidate as you do the next. So voter apathy is a problem that needs to be addressed, not only by the city, but by the state, by the county, by the nation. Uh, I think one of the things you can do for voter apathy is to make sure that the citizen knows that they are represented and their vote counts. And I think that's one of the big problems we have right now. And we talk about elections and, and how hard, you know, other people have talked about how, how hard it is to run. And it really is, it's difficult to run. You're putting yourself out there, uh, you know, things are said about you that are true, that you don't want to be out in the public, things are said about you that aren't true, that you can't counteract, because you may not have the resources to do so. And even if you do, once something's out there, it's hard to, to disprove a negative. It really is. Um, but what you run into is the fact that the citizen sees this and they say, what's the point? If I've got somebody who's always getting elected on a council seat, a county seat, a state seat, a national level, my one vote is not going to count, because of all this that goes on. They see the dirty politics, they see the mudslinging, they see all this. What you have to do is to be able to, to convince, and not, not just make them believe it, but have it to a point to where not only do they believe it, but they see it, that their vote does count, that what they have, what they have to say matters. And if you have, going back to term limits, if you have council members that have been on the council for ten, twelve, fourteen years, that have sat up there and are secure in their seats, because they have whatever support they have, and it's extremely difficult to run, uh, they lose touch with those citizens. And when they lose touch with those citizens, things can happen. They, they start thinking about their own interest, or the interest of those who helped them get elected, instead of the, and when I say that, that the ones that, that support them and run their campaigns, or provide them the most money, contributors, whatever the case may be, their particular interests, which are a, a small group, as opposed to the citizenry as a whole. I'll give you a perfect example. Today, the city council meeting in Dallas, they voted to remove a statue. Originally, they were going to have a, a committee, and it was going to be in ninety days after that committee made a decision, and then they would vote on it. And they were informed last week at their first meeting that that meeting would be today, that, that vote would be today, without their input, and that, uh, it was pretty much going to happen, it was a done deal. And when it happened today, before the meeting even occurred, there were, there was a crane on site, and there were police officers on site, and there were barricades on site, ready to remove that statue. Now, if you ask me, that's, that's a possible violation of the Open Meetings Act, because they estimated it's going to cost $500,000 to remove that statue, which means they had to rent that crane, because the city doesn't have a crane. And that crane had to be out there, and you had to pay them their money before they come out. So they spent money and had a crane out there, and had resources out there, before they even had a vote, before they even had the meaning to have the vote, on whether to remove the statue. Part of the problem was, is that those council members and the mayor in the city of Dallas have an agenda. Or there's a vocal minority, and I say minority because some of the, the polls that have taken place, and because the large number of people that spoke against doing that, at least at this moment, take some time, let's review it, at least at this moment, against doing that, they totally ignored them and voted, and then, within one hour, that crane was back, because they had moved it to a, a location where it wouldn't be seen, and they moved it back.
Can you, can you?
Yes, sir.
Bring your point back to the chart, please.
My point is, is that when you have a council or any elected body that is not concerned about getting re-elected, when they're not concerned about those that they represent, and they are, they start to have their own agendas, or the agendas of those that are going to help them get elected the most, the donors, the large donors, the large supporters, not the citizens as a whole.
And, and this will be my last question, but does, does Dallas have term limits?
Dallas does have term limits, yes. They actually, Dallas had.
Did it solve any of those issues that you were just?
I'm sorry?
The anecdote you just shared, I thought was, was interesting, but Dallas has term limits, right?
They do have term limits. They, they actually do, that's correct. And one of those, uh, one of those council members, the one who was spearheading this, other than the mayor, just got back on the council, from having termed out and been off for whatever their requirement is.
There are three in, in Dallas that had, were termed off and ran again, and all three were re-elected this last election.
Yes, that, that is correct. But the one that spearheaded the, the actual vote and all that was the first one.
Doesn't Dallas also have single-member districts, then?
They do now. They, they actually had a, multiple lawsuits that required that, because they had a 7-4-1 at one time. And then they went to a, I forgot what they went to next, and lawsuits basically caused them to go to a 14-1. It was a result of, of civil rights lawsuits.
So let's, let's, I, I have a question, and, and.
Yes, sir.
It, it deals with the time off, okay? So you, you have a four-year time off, uh, unless you're running for mayor, then it can be continuous, right?
Correct.
Now, should there be a number of times that you can step off and then step back on?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So, so conceivably, under, under what you propose, I could run, uh, serve for three two-year terms.
Six years total.
All right, six years total.
Yes, sir.
Then take four years off.
Yes, sir.
Then get re-elected.
Yes, sir.
Then serve six years.
Yes, sir.
Take four years off.
Sure.
And then serve another six years.
That is correct.
And then do that again, and again, and again.
If the citizens decide at that point that they want to bring you back, that whoever's in that seat at that point, and let's say they chose to run for that, for a third term, which would be the first term, you would be eligible to come back onto that seat, or to run for that seat. And if they decided that they felt that you were better after having looked at this person for, for two terms, and they wanted to re-elect you, then yes, sir, they would, they would have the ability to do that.
Is that really term limits, or is that time out?
It's term limits. It is term limits.
Because it, it just seems to me that if you can do it repeatedly.
To be honest with you, if you want to go that route, we can just say, serve six years and you're done, total.
All right, what, what, okay, so help me, help me understand the distinction then between the four years off and the six years total, because to me, six years total seems like a term limit. But being able to get back on, whether it's two years or four years.
Sure.
Does not appear to be a term limit.
Does a couple of things. One, it reminds those on the council who, who have served, whether it be two, four, or six years, that I have to get re-elected. I have to have the concerns of others. In other words, the complacency that comes with sitting on the council for a long time. We've had several council members and mayor who sat on this council for many years, and got to the point to where they did not have the citizens' best interest at heart. We had several council members and a mayor who sat on this council and went and spent the citizens' money on trips. Now, they did it in a roundabout way and through a company and all this, when they went to New York, or through Vegas, the trip to Vegas, but they spent the citizens' money. And yet, you know, when it was found out about the New York trip, oh, they just paid it back and nothing happened. And there was, there were no repercussions for that. And technically, what they did was illegal, but it wasn't big enough for anybody to prosecute, because it was only a couple of thousand dollars here, or a couple of thousand dollars there. What you have there is council members who felt it was okay to do something that they knew was most likely wrong, illegal, but they did it anyway. They accepted gifts from a vendor. They went out and, and took a trip, and saw a show, and got a special limo, and so on and so forth. Then, what you have is a, uh, council that, that attempted to hide those facts, and employed the city staff to also do that. When, when what in really reality happened was, that same information that I had requested, and received forty-two pages, that were almost 95% redacted, was presented in whole to a newspaper several years earlier, who had requested in Open Records Act, but there was a big story that happened and it never got researched or published. And someone else has that information now.
I think you're making.
May I ask you a question? How, how, how would single-member districts or term limits change? I mean, how would that address that problem? I mean.
Well, unfortunately, it cannot eliminate.
A scrupulous person is just an unscrupulous person, where they have.
No, no, like I said, unfortunately, it cannot eliminate it. You hope to have people who are honest, and who want to do the right thing, run for council, serve on council, or any, any elected seat. You would hope to have that. But what that does is it keeps those who are running, it keeps them on their toes, because they know that they're going to have to fight for that seat. And in two, in six years, if they've done what they're supposed to do, they've served the citizens, then they're off of their term, and they get re-elected. It also reduces the, the influence of special interests, uh, large donors, uh, groups that, that, uh, that are able to pool their resources and get council members elected. What you have, in my case, you ran, and, and you saw some of the stuff that went on. But in my case, you know, I, I went up against council members that, that had the resources of, of city employee unions and, and things like that, large donors that had donated money before, and was outspent by a large amount of money. And money that I, having no experience in money before, you know, was not able to, to take in, to, to get in donation.
I, I, elections are hard, I, I agree with you. But what I've heard from you is that accountability comes from the ballot box, and having to face the voters. And so isn't that an argument that would go counterintuitive to term limits?
No, because of the voter apathy.
Because in my last, I would say, let's say I am not going to run for reelection.
Mm-hmm.
Right, I'm done. I'm termed out. And let's say it's final, right? We, we're not coming back in four years, we're done. What accountability do I have in my, the rest of my term?
Unfortunately, you have very little accountability, unless the council sees you doing something that you're able to be censored or removed from council for, some, you know, not showing up to meetings or whatever.
Right, so you would say, you would, you would agree that the real accountability comes from, from the voters at the ballot box whenever it happens?
That's correct. But you also have voter apathy. So you have a few voters who are informed, because most of the other voters do not feel that they're being heard, or that their vote even counts. And so you have a, a few, a, a set number of voters, some of them are uninformed, they, they vote for whoever they believe, that, you know, that they told them. whoever they believe, you know, that they told them
I think Ms. Bell has a question for you.
Sure.
I have a question for you. Okay, you're saying, and correct me now if I'm wrong on this, okay? You're saying that they run a term, and then they stay off for four years, come back, like Mr. Noche was just saying. But you're also stating that you're sitting in that seat for so long, you start getting comfortable, and then that's when some funny things start going on. But if you're letting them to keep coming back and coming back, how is that defeating the purpose of them getting comfortable in their seat? Because when they come back every time, they're still going to be doing the same thing, they're still going to be comfortable in that seat, because they already knew what they were doing before. The people didn't want them there, they could have been the only one on the ballot, and you know, they won because of that. But if the person, the people in that district are not comfortable with him, and he keeps coming back, or she, he or she, keeps coming back, but you're saying they can keep on coming, and keep on coming back. I mean, what is the purpose of that? What, that is, I don't understand that.
My position on serving two, excuse me, three two-year terms, total of six years and two off, is more of a compromise. For me, I would say you serve three two-year terms, and you're done.
Well, originally, you didn't say that, though.
No, no, that's correct, because it's a compromise. Because I'm advocating the compromise position. Most people would like to see a certain number of terms on, and then take some time off, and then be able, be allowed to run again. I wouldn't have any problem with, you've got three shots at it, and that's it. It wouldn't hurt my feelings any. But again, I'm advocating a compromise position, after having talked to many people about this.
We have three more speakers. If anybody has more questions for Mr. Fitzgerald, or we can move on to our next speaker. Thank you very much, David.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Amanda Cunningham, at 2717 Caribbean Drive, Mesquite, Texas. I'm going to keep this short and sweet, because I need to get home and put my kids to bed. I am for the three-two term limits, or possibly for two-term limits. And I'm in favor of a female running for council at some point.
Well, run.
Questions? What's that?
Run.
I will.
What I was curious about, you said you're in favor of the term limits. Are you in favor of the two years off, and then you can run again, or is it just a hard stop at the three-two-year terms?
Two years off, and then you can run again.
Okay, and do you see any issue with needing to limit how many times you can do that?
I would prefer to limit it to three, possibly four.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Amanda, how do you feel about November voting?
I prefer May, personally. November, I agree with what has been said before. There's a lot thrown at us at one time, and I would prefer to be able to research each candidate properly before voting.
Amanda, how about single-member districts? How do you feel about that discussion?
I need to get back to you on that one. Right now, I'm in favor of it, but that could change, once I get more information.
Great, you know, we got five other meetings, four other meetings, so
Yes, I'm aware of that.
Finally.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, appreciate your efficiency, too. Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Allen, and I live at 713 Via Miramonte. I just bought a house in Mesquite in February, so I'm new to the city. I lived in Dallas for about five years. I have a master's degree in public affairs, and I work for Dallas County. Just a little bit about my background, unfamiliar with government. I am against term limits. I think that if constituents think you're doing a good job, they'll reelect you. If you're doing a bad job, you won't get reelected. It's hard enough to get anyone to run anymore. I think we're talking about not having voters turn out, and we want candidates to turn out. It's kind of counterintuitive, in my opinion. I'm for the November election with the constitutional amendments. I think that is a way to get voter turnout higher. And I think if you want to get voter turnout again, I think you should bring the issue of alcohol back to Mesquite. So, that's my stance.
Yeah, just curious, earlier, somebody brought up the subject of compensation for council members. Do you think that's a factor? I mean, if we're trying to attract more good candidates, would it be helpful to up that compensation?
I don't think compensation's going to matter, when it comes to running. I mean, unless it's a significant role, like, you know, county judge that's paid over $100,000, it's not a full-time job. And you're doing basically volunteer work. And then you get slandered, and all kinds of other stuff. So I mean, I think the focus should be on getting voter turnout, and not so much on term limits. I think that the focus should be on the citizens, not on city council.
Do you feel that term limits give the city instability, and not having term limits give it stability?
I don't factor that in, because I really think it's just up to the people to either revote someone in, or if no one runs against them, at least have someone in the seat. I mean, having a vacant seat doesn't represent anyone, and no one benefits from that at all.
But now, you say you're new to Mesquite, I've been here for a little while. And you do understand that just maybe we have that Chicago political machine around here, and possibly that that's leading that person to continue getting voted back in?
My argument would be to perhaps target different areas that voter turnout is very low, to get a different population to vote. The whole reason I started coming to city council is because there was no woman on the council, and I found that to be very disturbing, so.
And I'll do you one better, we never elected an African-American in Mesquite's history. So, someone who comes from Dallas, how did the interaction with a single-member district, how did that play? Do you think that's advantageous for Mesquite to transition to that?
The single district is where you're my council member, and I live in that district, and I only vote for you, correct?
Theoretically, yep.
I am totally for that. It makes sense. I don't think someone in South Mesquite should be representing me in North Mesquite. That's why you have the outlarge positions, to represent the city as a whole.
Sure. And I'll just kind of reiterate, if we do have a political machine, it's kind of broken. And I'm not taking your context to mean anything, or your comments to mean anything, but our problem, in my eyes, would be inexperience. And so, we have one council member who served three terms, and after that, there's not a whole lot there. Now, we've had some who've transitioned off, or haven't gotten reelected. But how would you recommend us to engage the voter electorate to turn out and vote, but also to recruit candidates? Do you have any advice on what that would look like? Because I agree, we need women colleagues, and my wife tells me that often. For me, not just, I'm not saying anything bad about my colleagues, but we also need people of color. And how do we engage a diverse community, so that our council looks like Mesquite?
I think that's the question everyone's asking everywhere, so I don't have an answer for that. I think there's a lot of different social media things that you can do, but there's no one solution.
Right, and you would include in your argument, maybe November elections would cast a wider net, would that be fair?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
How do you feel about support groups? Someone said that earlier, a support group for a candidate.
Wouldn't that just be like a campaign volunteer?
Well, to, what we have is that, when candidates run, they really don't know what to do. I mean, literally, do not know what to do. So this would be more of a support group mentorship program, or something like that?
I don't see a problem with that. I think that would be a good idea. I know a lot of people have no idea how to run for a city council at all, so instructions would be useful. Someone mentioned putting it on the website, how to file, and just have a step-by-step procedure on the website would be a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome to Mesquite, we're glad you're here. We've been waiting forever for you.
Evening, my name is David Oldright, I live at 1449 Monica Lane, in the Windsor Manor District. I wanted to speak on the single-member district, the changing of the elections and the term limits. I'll try to make it quick. The single-member district, I'm actually against that concept. The reason for it is because I see a lot of division, and a lot of compartmenting that's already happening at a national level, and in some ways at a local level, based on many different issues. I think that at the point that you implement single-member districts, you're furthering that compartmenting, and you inherently breed conflict when you compartment people. Those conflicts can often expand to lines such as economic class, racial class, so on and so forth. So I don't see that that's a benefit to the city, I think that what's best for the city should serve the whole city. Diversity, for the sake of diversity, does not breed excellence. If elections were supposed to be easy, they probably wouldn't be worth running for. As far as changing the election cycle, or timeline, I would say that there's a lot of partisan politics that goes on, both around the constitutional amendment election cycles, and of course, the large-scale national and statewide election cycles. I have always stated, I don't believe that partisan politics has a place at city level. There are some people that sit on our current city council that I voted for, that are politically, ideologically different from me, but I believe in their commitment to the city. And I think that the more you move something towards a November cycle, you're kind of introducing partisanship to it, and there's no place for that. I would also say that the most dangerous civil actor is an uninformed voter. Moving the election cycles to November to bring in voters who still don't really know what they're voting for, is detrimental to everybody as a whole. I do think that the city could push, could do a publicity push, like they did for the Fourth of July, regarding fireworks and things like that, to elevate the knowledge of the voter for what they're, you know, what's up for election, what is coming. If we can do it for the Fourth of July, and fireworks, and gunfire in the air, certainly we can do it at a level that's going to benefit the city from a representation standpoint. I would also say that a city-sponsored election education committee might be kind of nice, if you come to the city, and all you're asking for is kind of a step-by-step guide, policies, things like that, maybe resources that can be gone to for finding funding for your campaign, how to, you know, do this, do that, do the other along the step of the way. I think that that would be a huge thing to do. And that kind of solves several of the questions that I've heard raised this evening. As far as term limits go, I think they're needed because of voter apathy. We're never going to solve voter apathy completely, at any level of government, that's been proven, unless you put really controversial candidates on the ballot, see the last presidential. But with that being said, I would support three-two-year terms as a city council member, because the city is a faster dynamic than the national level, remembering, of course, that it's governance and legislation that we're looking at. And I think that three-two-year terms for the mayor would also be okay. I believe in a step up to the mayorship would, you know, still give a three-two-year term. It doesn't mean that those mayoral terms will contribute to the city council terms, they're separately. And I do think that that should be, honestly, just like it is for a president, it's a lifetime thing. You spend 12 years on the city council of Mesquite as a mayor or a city council person, that's probably enough. It's a president and a half, if you will. Mesquite has had corruption issues in the past, questionable retirement packages, questionable funding packages, et cetera, of course, travel gate, whatever you want to call it. And I would ask this question, when we talk about term limits, you used a term I like, which was the Chicago style. What we call it, and have called it for years here, is the Good Old Boy Network, and I think a lot of us are probably tired of hearing that term, as it's referred to, the city of Mesquite's government. There is a sense of the power elite that contributes to the voter apathy. I think that if you can introduce term limits and force a turnover at the city council level, you're going to see more involvement, if for nothing else, because it changes the way that we're currently doing business of keeping the same old same old, and keeping a power structure in place. And I'd say that's also another reason for having the staff appointees, over $100,000, come from within the municipality of Mesquite.
Help me with the last one, the staff appointees, over $100,000 coming from the city of Mesquite, help me understand what that is.
I think that if anybody, if anybody is a staff appointee in the city of Mesquite, they're in a position to make decisions that directly impact Mesquite, they're in that $100,000 range, which means they're senior management, senior staff, that they should live in the city of Mesquite.
Okay, thank you. David, I heard some opposition to single-member district, because it creates conflict. Is that a fair summary? Wouldn't you agree that elections are inherently a competition, a conflict of values, ideas, if we have two candidates, that is, right? Shouldn't it be a clash of different ideas? Or maybe it's not, and it doesn't matter who we vote for?
Well, from the standpoint of a single-member district, the reason I'm not against them is not so much from a voting standpoint, I can understand why I would want to vote for somebody in my district, ideology versus ideology, or whatever. My concern, when we talk about single-member, single, I'm going to learn how to talk, single-member districts, is how it impacts the city government as a whole, because basically, you know, you've got this side of the city wanting their agenda matched, this side of the city wanting their agenda matched, and then you've got this, you know, okay, how do we pile up, or how do we choose which side? Well, these people are going with me. And you see that happening quite a bit, you see it in the city of Dallas, you see it all over the place.
But you would still need a majority of the votes to have action. So you would have to have some sort of consensus building, to have any sort of policies matriculate through the process.
Which we have now. So I don't think that a single-member district would really perpetuate
And yeah, the other point I wanted to make, or kind of penetrate a little bit, is the idea that only November elections, and I'm not sure you said this, but November elections introduce partisanship. My experience has been running into May election, and I've had robocalls against me for being funded for abortion dollars, whatever that means. And both parties right now are considering having in their platform, a endorsement process for May elections. And so, I'm not sure, what I've heard tonight from, not just yourself, but a few different people who've argued that November elections are somehow partisan, and May elections are protected, you know, they're sacred against that, I'm just curious to hear your thoughts, knowing that we already have some partisan battles. If a Democrat runs, you're going to have some of the folks that are on the other side attack, or vice versa, whatever the case may be. And we see both state parties kind of licking their chops about how they can get their bench to start building a resume of credibility.
I would submit to you that with the May elections, as, if you compare the two, the May versus November, because it's really a comparison-contract ideal, sure, you have some levels of partisanship activities going on in the election cycle, particularly if you have a conservative and a liberal running against each other. We had an election this past cycle that was basically a liberal versus a more liberal, or vice versa, however you wanted to call it, and it worked out the way that it did. The problem is, that when you introduce it at a November level, you have a lot more focus, a lot more spotlight, I think, that is put on it from maybe parties that don't necessarily have an interest in the city of Mesquite, but more have an interest in the city, you know, a power structure. You know, how many cities do we control, how many, whatever, so on and so forth. I think that most of the citizens that would come out and vote in November, you're going to pick up a lot of people, and we've talked about that. Why vote in November? Well, you're going to get higher numbers.
Yeah.
Well, what are those numbers for? Are those numbers because, okay, now we really want to put a hard-target look on each one of these people, and are they a Democrat, are they a Republican? I personally don't care. Do you care about the city of Mesquite? I think in May
get crowded, that the ballot is going to be too long, and that we're going to have a focus on national races or a state, you know, senate race, and the voters somehow are just too dense to take enough information in, and they won't get informed on local issues. But you're kind of making the opposite argument, right? That we don't want to draw extra attention to municipal elections by putting it in November, right? That we want to keep it in May where we can focus on it there. How do you reconcile those two thoughts?
Well, from the standpoint of May, I think that, you know, one of the things that I mentioned was the, you know, committee to put a publicity push by the city towards the voters, so they know what they're voting on and so on and so forth. I think what we do is, obviously, if it's a city-sponsored, it certainly can't have a unilateral lilt towards conservative or liberal. It's got to be straight up the road. So the focal points that you'll get from that standpoint are not going to be leaning towards the partisan politics. There are plenty of people who've, well, let me rephrase. There is a number of voters within the Mesquite, all the elections that I've been involved with over the years. It's a dismally small number for the municipality size, but those people are always going to be involved. They're built in, they're going to be involved, they're here. They've spoken tonight, they're sitting up there, all of y'all. So we have that part of it. Bringing in other people with an interest in Mesquite and teaching about what's important for Mesquite, what we're trying to do in Mesquite, I think that's far more important than pushing an agenda that has a partisan lilt to it. That's all.
Okay. Let me ask. I've heard over and over again tonight a concern about voter apathy. It's described that we have low voter turnout in Mesquite because of voter apathy. That has extremely negative overtones. Do you, how would you describe that condition in Mesquite? Is it that people don't care, or is it that people don't know what's going on? I mean, do you, when you talk to people, I talk to so many people that don't even know that there was an election in May. Because the local candidates don't have the money to do the sort of publicity that happens with the big elections, people do not even know there's an election. So how would you characterize this situation with what we call voter apathy? And what do you think is the solution?
I think it's, great question, by the way. I think it's, I think it's both, actually. Yes, there's voter apathy. There's a lot of people out there that don't think that the city government makes a difference to them. There's a fair number of people that I've interacted with over the years that feel like the city government doesn't really care. Meaning that, and no offense to anybody in the city government, it's just, you know, this is the general premise. I mean, and some of you on the council and some of you on this committee are here because you want to make sure that people know that you care and that somebody cares. So with that being said, that's the voter apathy aspect of it. People just don't know that it matters. Does it matter who I go vote for? Because, you know, if the same people keep getting elected, then what's the point? The second part of that is, and, you know, there's no easy way to say this either, voter ignorance. Not knowing when the elections are, not knowing what's going on. And that's where that whole concept of the city of Mesquite putting out a push, just like they did with the Fourth of July, just like they've done with everything else that matters, put out a push to inform voters that there is an election occurring.
So you're putting most of the responsibility on the voter, then, rather than on the systems that we have put in place to keep voters informed and make it efficient for them?
I'm not going to say that I'm putting it on anybody. I'm saying that if we want to say that there are systems that are in place to keep the voters informed, I would say that the numbers speak for themselves when we say that they're completely and utterly inept at doing that. Like you said, you've talked to plenty of people who don't even know that elections happen, and obviously, the way we're putting that information out there, the way the city is putting it out there, the way social networking is used, the way whatever means are available to the city are being used are not being used effectively. Is it on the voter to educate themselves? Yeah, yeah, I'll give you that. But I'll also tell you that we're a blue, you know, pretty much a blue-collar community. In most households, you've got two people that are working, a mom and a dad, where both are present. If it's a single-parent family, you know they're working. So the amount of time that they have to spend educating themselves, which I've heard numerous times raised tonight, that that whole education process of, how do I educate? We don't want to overload the voter. I think that's a fair assessment. But I do think that the city could take steps to help resolve that voter ignorance/voter apathy by putting stuff out there and putting pushes out there for people to understand, yes, there's an election. What places are, and what does that mean to me? You know what I'm saying? And it's easy to do. There are web developers who are a dime a dozen, they don't cost anything to hire, and bang, 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 and they've got it set up, and you know exactly what you do. You just have to have somebody that's responsible for the content and a committee that just oversees it to make sure that it's not going in the wrong direction.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. And thank you, everyone who spoke tonight. We really appreciate it. Some very lively discussion. And you probably weren't ready for the questions, but everybody did a fantastic job at fielding the questions, and everybody lowered their center of gravity, and I appreciate the flexibility. The next meeting is going to be Wednesday, September the 13th at 7:00 PM, and it will be in District 1 at McDonald Middle School. That meeting will be followed on Wednesday, September the 20th with a meeting at 7:00 PM at District 4 at Agnew Middle School. And then Wednesday, September 27th at 7:00 PM, District 3 meeting at Wilkinson Middle School. And Wednesday, October 4th at 7:00 PM at District 2 at Kimbrough Middle School. And then this committee will meet on Wednesday, October 11th at 7:00 PM in the council conference room. And if the crowd dictates, we'll move it out here. But we'll have a discussion amongst the committee members, kind of the different things that we've heard and ideas, and explore those, and then see if there's any further need to have more meetings for the committee at that point in time. So, appreciate everybody's participation. Hope more folks get out and come see us at some of these other meetings, and we'll look forward to seeing you next Wednesday at McDonald Middle School at 7:00 PM. Thank you.